This meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM.
Please get started from the roll call room, please. Chair Harden.
President.
Vice Chair Kuhn.
President.
Commissioner Nusoli.
Here.
Commissioner DeRosa.
President.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lepine.
Here.
We have a board, thank you.
Good evening, all of the planning commission, folks in the audience, anyone watching online. If you would like to address the planning commission this evening during public comment. For any along the agenda, we request that you fill out the previous feeder card and turn that into staff. Prior to when we call for comments on an agenda item. Meeting is being recorded and viewing is available via Zoom, however, the planning commission. Will not be receiving public comment over Zoom. We do accept public comment through email submitted prior to the meeting. Or. Yeah, we're rolling. Commissioner Johnson, if you currently have some questions then. I actually feel like we've got one by the comment for items not on the agenda. We have any requests for items not on the agenda. Those feeder cards?
We are not seeking.
Okay, moving on to approval of minutes. Do they want to have any remarks or concerns on the minutes from the January 21st meeting?
I'm going to approve the January 21st minutes.
Second. And we just approved that by affirmation. All in favor, but any opposed? Passes, alright, moving very long, we have our hearing. You know, we have a public hearing conducted with this, item seven. We have a staff presentation on the capital improvement program.
Yes, we do. Alright, well, Christie brings it up, I'll just introduce myself. My name is Kelly Beggs and I'm the Assistant Community Development Director and I'm pleased to present the item before you tonight. Which is review of the 2025-2026 Capital Improvement Program for Consistency with the General Plan. To start, I'd just like to introduce the staff who are presenting tonight and available to answer questions. Peter Gilli is here, the Community Development Director. Then we're joined by Brian Adams, the Assistant to the City Manager, will present information about the CIP program. And then Dahlia Mano.
Manal.
Manal is, I've never had to say it, thank you. Is the Principal Civil Engineer and Anna Morales is here, the Management Analyst for the Public Works Department. And then we're also joined by Damian Sandholm with the Community Services Department to provide information about parks CIP projects. So, to kind of go over the reason that we're here tonight, the California Government Code Section 65401. Requires that the city's planning commission make a determination that the list of proposed public works, also known as capital improvements. Projects recommended for planning initiation of construction during the ensuing fiscal year. Is in conformance with the city's general plan. Prior to the adoption of the CIP and the budget, which will occur later this year. For this fiscal year. So, to present the CIP projects, I will hand it off to Brian Adam, Assistant to the City Manager, thanks Brian.
Good evening, Commissioners, I'm Brian Adams, Assistant City Manager. I just wanted to provide you a brief overview of some of the new projects that are inside the proposed capital improvement program budget for incoming fiscal year. So, for the parks capital improvement program projects, we have a dog park conceptual design. This is just exactly what it says, it's basically soliciting a consultant to kind of generate that design for improvements to Commonwealth Park. Playground, playground replacement. The Community Services Department completed a parks need assessment earlier this year. And the result of that survey was basically a prioritization of some of the kinds of improvements that people inside San Bruno want to see in the parks. And that was presented to the city council earlier this year in April in a special council meeting, so. And then also there's the Recreation Aquatic Center Landscaping Improvement, so. While the Recreation Aquatic Center was under construction, there were a number of trees along Crystal Springs Avenue. That during like intense storm activity fell down and those trees were removed. Now, there are tree stumps at the back of the rack and along Crystal Springs. This project basically allows for removing those stumps and then just incorporating the general landscaping of the back of the rack and along that part of Crystal Springs. So that it all looks just like the rest of the city, really beautiful. And then, of course, Damian Sandholm is available to answer any questions related to some of those problems. And then moving on to the technology CIP, so this is a mid-year amendment project, it was added during this fiscal year, but it is a new project to CIP. This involves, specifically it's focused on updating the AV for this room to make it more suitable for council meetings. Although like this room was equipped to support general meetings for people who book in the facility, it wasn't exactly set up to support city council meetings in the way that we were using the senior center. So, the price tag on this project is quite high, but the kind of note that I give from staff is that. That's kind of like a blank check that's been given, the actual expectation for the project is that it should take a lot less of that money to make the required updates, to bring it up to the level we want. And then I think any further changes to other meeting rooms inside the Recreation Aquatic Center is kind of like up to the Community Services Department to see like. What kinds of changes they want to make to better support the needs of people in the community or businesses that use the facilities inside the rack. And then moving on to street CIPs, we have the Phase 2A of the RO Streetlight Replacement Project, so the majority of the problem. Streetlights in the system were replaced in this fiscal year, so. Originally, it was planned to kind of like complete the full replacement of the system and that would have been a much more expensive replacement. But staff has recommended that we have a 2A, they basically phased it out even further to replace some of the ones that may be of concern. But that not to replace those ones that historically have not been a problem. San Bruno Avenue Transit Corridor is Phase 1, so. Another project that's in the CIP was basically the development of San Bruno Avenue Transit Corridors Plan. And so this is one of the first projects in that plan, basically adding like flashing beacons along San Bruno Avenue to various, two specific intersections. And, you know, just to bring kinds of like traffic calming and pedestrian safety. Then you have the Traffic Signal Camera Replacement, the name is quite similar to another project in the CIP, but basically this is replacing the cameras that are used at the different. Signalized intersections that are used to detect vehicles and replacing these would basically just. Improve the signal timing at various intersections inside San Bruno and then because it's newer technology, opens up different kinds of like smart city capabilities that maybe we don't have with our current cameras. And then Dahlia, not always in the building to answer additional questions if you have related to these projects. And then for the stormwater CIP projects, a lot of these projects are. New projects that are being funded or their staff is proposing that we fund through Measure Q general obligation. Bonds, the 2024-2025 Trash Capture Installation Project was a mid-year amendment, it was brought forth to council earlier this fiscal year, being funded with general fund. Contingency reserve, basically this is about capturing large solids that go into the trash, or sorry, the storm drains and complying with like. State regulations to make sure that we're not letting trash into the bay and letting chemicals into the bay and that kind of stuff. Then we have the Bennington Storm Drain Installation. I think it's in the name and then green stormwater infrastructure implementation, so again, meeting with like different kinds of requirements at the same level to basically have more green stormwater infrastructure. And kind of incorporating that into our storm drain infrastructure period. And I think like some of our new facilities like the rack already have green storm drain infrastructure, so different kinds of like ways to process. Storm runoff and then have it like go into the system without like putting unnecessary pressure on the system when there's like a large storm event. And overflow for corrugated metal pipe that Cunningham Tank 1. Exactly what it says, just to replace the corrugated pipes to reduce the effect of that runoff and. For the storm drain master plan, basically just to provide an updated plan that hasn't been updated maybe over, you know, over a little over a decade. So just updating that plan so that we have basically the latest sense of our storm drain infrastructure and so that we can basically point to that when applying grants and kind of demonstrate compliance to this team. But Dahlia can correct me if I'm misstating anything on that front. And for water CIP projects, we just have a water storage tank refurbishment, so for several tanks, basically going in and. Doing that interior exterior refurbishment just to maintain the life of those assets. And with that said, kind of flying through all these different projects, once again, as Assistant Director Kelly noted. Folks are in the building to answer any additional questions you have, but with that, I will hand it back over.
Thanks, Brian, so I'll just go over the general plan consistency of all the projects that Brian discussed in the next two slides. And I apologize because this is a lot of very small text, it's also in your staff report underneath each project. So for parks projects, the general plan policies that relate to the projects focus on developing and maintaining parks as well as replacing aging equipment. For the technology project, which will improve the AV equipment in this building to better service council chambers and for the planning commission for meetings. The general plan focuses on improving public access to meetings. For streets projects, general plan policies focus on providing and accommodating all modes of transportation on city streets, including bicycle and pedestrian users. And improving pedestrian connections and then also implementing a street lighting program and investing in intelligent transportation systems to increase efficiency. One last slide on the general plan consistency, the general plan stormwater policies include maintaining, upgrading and replacing storm drains as needed. And then water policies include ensuring the adequacy of the city's water supply system. There is one other general plan consistency item that Anna will discuss next. So, there is a housing element program, Housing Element Program 16A, which requires that the city prioritizes capital improvements in low resource areas such as neighborhoods east of El Camino Real. Prioritizing ADA improvements, pedestrian improvements, bicycling improvements, transit improvements, tree planting and park improvements in lower resource neighborhoods. So Anna has been a big part of developing the CIP prioritization program and I will let you take it away.
Thank you. Hi, good evening, Anna Morales, Management Analyst of Public Work and I'm going to be providing a brief overview of our CIP prioritization pilot program. Okay, so in January 2024, city council approved the CIP prioritization pilot program framework designed to refine how we recommend capital improvement projects. This approved framework is based on 10 objective criteria with an assigned point system which includes equity. Health and safety issues, asset condition, economic prosperity, environment, strategic initiative, mandates. Funding, collaboration and shovel readiness. The pilot also included an updated CIP timeline with milestones including project nominations being accepted beginning in October. The budget development and council priorities meeting in January, the CIP study session in April. The budget approval in June and budget implementation in July. So, to formalize the new CIP framework, staff created a policy and procedural guide. A video explaining the factors and a submission website for city council members and staff to nominate their CIP projects. Looking a little further into the equity criteria, this is how it appears on the submission website that we rolled out. So, the equity criteria, as Kelly mentioned, aligns with Program 16A of the adopted housing element, which emphasizes the prioritization of capital improvements in low resource areas. Particularly neighborhoods east of El Camino Real, so on the website, we asked project nominators to enter the address of their project. And we cross-referenced that address with the California Tax Credit Allocation Committee Housing and Community Development Opportunity Area MAP. Which categorized areas within San Bruno based on access to opportunity and resource levels ranging from low resource to highest resource. We also cross-referenced the address with 100% affordable housing developments within the city. So prioritizing capital improvements in these areas helps ensure that communities with historically limited access to services and opportunities are not overlooked in the city's infrastructure planning. So, moving forward in fall 2024, the pilot was approved for implementation as part of the budget process. And the online submission form was rolled out to staff and city council members resulting in 20 CIP project nominations. In January 2025, staff presented that list to council, tonight we're presenting it to the planning permission and the next step is to adopt it in June. So, in summary, received 20 projects of the 11 projects being recommended for funding, nine are located in low or water resource areas. And with that, I will pass it back to Kelly.
Yeah. Alright, so I will just move forward to the recommended action tonight, which is to adopt a resolution confirming review of the fiscal year 2025-26. Capital Improvement Program budget and its conformance with the San Bruno General Plan pursuant to California Government Code Section 65401. For next steps, as Anna mentioned, the city council will receive the planning commission recommendation on the CIP general plan conformance. And later in June with the budget adoption, so that concludes our presentation, we're happy to answer any questions.
Clarifying question for staff?
Good. Um, clarifying question and I kind of struggled with this a little bit as I read the packet. Are we being asked to, are we allowed to respond to? Any of the categories of expenses that are listed on the packet, because I know we, the staff presentation didn't cover all of them, because there's many. But there's a few that I had a question about, so I think it falls under the category, I'm assuming under health and safety. So can I ask, can I ask about it? Even though it wasn't all the categories that were part of our expenditure?
Are you kind of referring to the larger CIP that was an attachment? So, the reason that only some projects are kind of delved into in the staff report is because we're looking at only the ones that are newly proposed this year. Some of them may have been proposed in previous fiscal years and are continuations. You're welcome to ask clarifying questions, but the action before the commission tonight is to make recommendations on consistency for the new projects, but you are welcome to ask questions.
Alright, well, let me ask a clarifying question and if it's not under the umbrella of the discussion today, then I'll just hold on to it. One of the larger ticket items was under technology, not necessarily for the rack center. But I'm looking at corporation as a 24-25 budget, so it might be a category that you just referred to, but it might not be. The police station radio system for $5 million, is that something that we can ask about or is that something that is not under the purview of the discussion today?
So, we can provide a little clarification to, because I'm not the, the police department is one managing the project, we can get more clarifying information for the commission? Or do you have a question about what the content of the project is or why the dollar total is so high or?
Actually both, I mean, that clarification would be great because. I mean, all of these things sound great and they sound essential and I know we're, you know, measure Q funds to try to put it together and it's kind of a multi-year basis. But it is probably the largest line item under all those categories. And $5 million, so I was just curious about, and this might be a question for PD and city council. But I guess the questions that carry over to them were, I was making this a go out to bid, how essential is it? What is the cost of neighboring cities who have upgraded their technology, I know there's a state mandate and encryption, so it's not necessarily a want, but a mandated need. But it's the largest item on there for $5 million, so it would be just great to have more, more context, even though it might have been appropriated or maybe. I mean, and that number just, I think probably it is the largest by night, but just some wonderings about it because the numbers are large.
Yeah, we can definitely work on getting you some more information about that from PD, kind of for the scope of the discussion tonight, that would have been reviewed by the planning commission and the. And the correlating fiscal year for general plan consistency.
I just don't understand what I'm seeing, so, but I wasn't sure where the question landed, so. I would really want to know that and I think given in June, when it comes to council, I might just as a degree never show up and ask it anyway, because we need to know more, it's a lot of money there, so, thank you folks.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify, no, that particular project is possible, I just, I think in the proposed budget for this year 2025 to 2026, for that particular project. Staff is recommending pulling back $1 million from that project and so those $1 million were used to allocate to different projects inside the capital improvement program. But like Assistant Director Kelly Gregson mentioned, I think we can go back to the police department, maybe walk their information.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so let's start first with the, you talked about the prioritization, so does that mean there are other projects? Yeah, that you had considered and then got pushed down the line, how much is it?
We did receive 20 projects in total, but the city council made it, or the, sorry, the city managers, it's, I don't know which ones are moving forward, but we did present them with, and the city council with the prioritize list.
Okay, so there's a list of 20, what do we have here? I don't know, I didn't.
It's 11.
About half, you did provide the source, but, so we don't know what else you looked at and we can't verify that you meant the prioritization. Right?
I mean, we did provide the source to the city council and the city manager internally, but not in the staff report.
Not, but not in public, I think.
It wasn't a public setting, yeah.
Oh, okay, well, then I'll consider that very much, I don't know that, it's not. Funding, so when I read this, did my understanding right that the whole program is $1 billion underfunded?
No, it's.
I got, I got lost on that part.
So, the unfunded appendix in the capital improvement program kind of reflects like, the way I might describe it is, let's say, all the buildings and all the infrastructure we maintained went completely one day. That's maybe like the amount of money we would need to replace all that, that's kind of the way I interpret it, but I think. Most of the time, we're kind of like upgrading and maintaining infrastructure as it is, we're not like tearing out both things 100% and then putting it back in. But I guess if you're going to like add up all those receipts, maybe that's how much we would spend over the course of it, but I think. For some of those like projects or like those unfunded capital improvements, it may include things like uncertainties and contingencies that. Maybe when we get down to it, like it might cost a little bit less, but I think otherwise like those unfunded. The unfunded capital improvements, they're just sitting there as figures and then we just increase them based on inflation each year and we pass it along to the next proposed budget.
And this is, I think, it's kind of, so it's, it's not unfunded obligations for 2024 or even for a specific time frame, that's what you're saying, I guess. So, it's not, it's not a real number then. I mean, if you're saying you have an unfunded, like police station that you potentially need to replace, but in fact, you don't need to replace it. What's the point of us, 52,690,000?
Yeah, so.
It's not a real number, is it?
We have the number in the project list, I don't think it was included.
But you're saying you don't actually do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's like the cost of replacing City Hall, how much it would cost to do that or the cost of replacing the public works cooperation yard, which has been a need for years, but. It's just not a prioritized need and things in that nature.
So, I mean, the line of questioning should get to next year, you know, are we adding to an unfunded amount that we're not actually expecting to get done? Like are these projects, are we actually expecting that they get done or?
The ones that are, the new, are you referring to the projects that we're presenting tonight?
Exactly.
I think, so these projects, we are, yeah.
Yeah, I think we are going to get added to the ones that, for example, if the 20 that were presented and not all of them are moving forward, those ones that are not moving forward are going to get added to the unfunded. List moving forward next year.
But there's, so that's what I'm saying, so it's added to the unfunded list of $1 million, you don't have the $1 million to spend, like never going to happen. But so are these added to the other list, like yeah, we're actually going to do these projects?
Probably so, yeah.
Probably so, okay, so it's still one.
Yeah.
I mean, hypothetically, like, this is sort of like a balance sheet, long-term liability that could be in indefinite duration and it's like, yeah, you'll, I mean. You'll have to replace City Hall eventually, either in a sort of. You know, the, what's the name, ship of Theseus, you know, really, either you're going to have to replace, you know, one wall at a time as things crumble or you're going to have to build a new City Hall, it's just like, is that one year, five years, 10 years, that a pin? But we're tracking our estimate of if we did, you know, if it burned down and we have to replace it tomorrow, if that goes into this number.
Yeah, and even our unfunded list is, we're starting to prioritize that as well, so something like replacing City Hall would probably be towards the bottom more versus. The ones this year that didn't go through are going to be more towards the top of it.
Okay, so there's just one question.
Yeah.
Alright, sorry, because you have a couple more on the individual projects now. So, the first is the dog park, it looks like 75,000, not actually, no hard costs then.
Correct, it's designed. It should work with a landscape architect, develop some conceptualism.
Okay. I mean, and I know we're not really looking at the purview of costs, but that's extremely high, which is a, just a dog park within a park for. Firework, anything like that. And I know it's like a landscape, that's a lot.
I think it's got a lump sum to make sure we have the resources to complete that design phase of the project. Once we, no, I don't think it's a design build, the build of the dog park would cost a lot, a lot more.
What do you think the hard costs would be?
I do not.
You should have had, I mean, so when I say that, you know, you have a proximity size. And you know, it's a hundred dollars square foot, you know, you should have some kind of concept and you look at the cost of $75,000, makes sense, where would we spend? Where would the cost be, you know?
And so this is just to go through the city of landscape architect and then start with the initial designs and then once that information comes back, which will have some cost estimates to it, then we'll look into the next phase.
Maybe this would be more profitable too, that sounds like the private, the owner would kind of like figured out some basic costs on our cost. A real RLM and then said, oh, it doesn't make sense to spend money on. Before we even know how much we're going to spend on.
I'm understanding that your parks manager could make it today, has some of those numbers, but I don't recommend this would be today.
I, in terms of our approvals, I don't, I don't know which way it goes, I actually agree with the park. It's not, maybe not on the process, but that can be compensation. Thank you. The traffic signal camera replacement, that's just for signaling, that's not for, is that correct?
It's correct.
Okay. The Bennington Storm Drain Installation, I did a drive by that one, it, the description in the document didn't seem to fit. With what's in here, so there are storm drains, maybe on the other side, there's no algae, it didn't seem to be, still has it. So maybe you can help explain the need for this, how this came about.
So, your question is how this project came about being on the CIP?
Yeah, so I drove Bennington. Yeah, so I, I wrote Bennington. Plane or whatever, it's not, you know, it's just like three blocks or something. Uh, there's storm drains on the top, along one side, there's storm drains on the bottom, along one side. There, there's kind of storm drains, maybe it's, maybe it's not enough. It didn't see any slip or tripping cables, and tripping cables is a good idea. Um, it says, uh, it, you know, persistent runoff in these properties, selection, street gutters promoting algae growth and. Rainwater, which is competitive. Um, I didn't see any of that. So that's all I have to say.
Um, there, there may be several reasons why you didn't see any of that. We, whether, um, there may be a, a number of contributing factors. Um, I understand that a, a number of our projects were selected based on, um, you know, maintenance concerns, uh, storm drain master plan. And so, you know, there, our maintenance crew, they spend a lot of time and effort, um. Of mitigating these issues. And so, uh, it, it, just because you didn't see it, it doesn't necessarily mean that it, it doesn't, it's not the occurring.
You don't have any specifics on this one?
I don't have any specifics, but we're more than happy to get additional information to.
Yeah, I mean, we're actually pretty good based on, um, performance. I don't, without any information, I mean, I just looked upon it. It's, it kind of, looks like no problem. And so. Yeah, I mean.
Okay, well, with respect to the question, this is a general plan consistency finding.
Yeah.
You're finding that, are you finding something does not comply with the general plan or you're lacking more details? You can ask for more details as a member of the public at any time. Our staff's always available. This item is about, is it consistent with the general plan? Is it consistent with the policies listed? Is it fully proposed somewhere where the general plan does not show them? Are certain improvements that you showed in the event that's inconsistent with the policies? So this isn't a discussion about some of the details that are being, are being asked about.
Yeah, I mean, so thi- this was designed, let's say this was designed and engineered correctly, there's no, there's no like engineering issues with this. Does that mean a change to it is consistent with? Let's say that, this is, this is not how I'm starting, you know, people. Uh, like, I mean, so.
Is grounds, if the council approved this list?
Um, the city manager recommended it, they're gonna approve it on June ten.
Uh, the council has seen.
Yes.
This, this total list. So, um. Uh, if the council had an issue with that, I want more information, we would have. Written that at this time. If you want to, uh, both know on that particular item, because we don't believe a connection today, I think, I think. That's your right. But again, we're talking about compliance with general plan policies. Is infrastructure. Improvements being proposed in places that align with the general plan. It just speaks for the whole city and, and, and as such. Uh, the, this is not really a discussion of the details of, of all these projects.
Neither, neither. I think the details are important because if there's not. Problem, then or, then the existing condition already complies with the general plan. And therefore, then we wouldn't approve. A new project. And, and so I think that's, that's the line of question here. If it's already in compliance, then we would, for example, the. The dog park, um, I think it's a missing component, that's, that's an improvement, so that's. Um, but this one had, doesn't seem to be lacking anything. It is not, actually, so, um.
I would suggest that I am skeptical that this item would have been proposed and scored had there not been some record of issue. I mean. You know, maybe it would be nice if it had that sort of photos of the event where, you know, not, I mean, assume there's only an app, but we have a period, right, extended period. And you're not. But I, I trust that the staff is able to.
Yeah. You could be my partner, but one plan, one. And if it's on your case, I'll always call on you and you're just fine.
Um, uh, do you need to be fair to? The commission to approach this list with good faith that the. Um, city manager and the overview of the city council, um, brings a believability to these. Different items. And we could take up any concerns. With director of the city manager and then forward with regards to our objective, which is to focus on whether they can afford to develop that.
I, I agree with you, which eleven, I think it's consistent with what. Well, um, yeah, but I think like, we could have reached an inclusion and then we should question everything. Um, but I could do, you know, future shots with that. In terms of one, is, is an item really unnecessary? That's what the council, for all the complications we have.
Yeah, okay, I'm good. That's, that was my final question. But, um, you know, I think this is, um. Um, our line of work is to trust and verify, um, we need to make sure that, you know, staff is being very thorough. Um, in this case, very hard to verify, um. Same with, like I said, the prioritization, can't verify, but it has to go with the problem. This one, this one. Um, yeah.
Good, thank you. All right, so do we have any, any questions or comments? Um, I have just one quick one. I noted there were a couple of items of funding, like, I don't grant. I was wondering whether we in fact, like, is that money in our account and if not, can we count on it?
Which one are your, please?
Uh, the one I thought my eyes had a fairly high percentage was of the regional stormwater capture project that I'm choosing, I'm reading.
The two-point formulae grant, yeah.
It was, I forget the exact, I don't know if it was on, eh, eh, eight, eight, five. Um, uh. I, I remember it being a large number, and I would like.
Yeah, we have a, we, we recently just received the agreement for that grant like two weeks ago, and it's on a reimbursement basis. So we're, we don't have the funds yet, but we're gonna start requesting reimbursement. And we're allowed to start requesting reimbursement.
Yeah, I know this has been an issue in various places in the last. Or many, uh, months. So I, I don't know, I guess that may be something to keep an eye on.
Yeah.
Um, that was all I had. Uh, if there is public comment on this item, it would be accepted at this time. Do you have any speaker cards for this item?
No, not.
All right, um. I believe we are supposed to close the public portion of the hearing then, but. Right, uh, any opposed? Um, all right, uh, so. Thank you. There is further discussion on the item before we make any questions? Um. Do you have like any question, how you want to add on your concern on the, the, and the revision?
I, I think this just goes to public comment to city council, like private and public comment, right? And unless everybody agrees, you know, I.
Okay.
Good to hear. That was a part of the, of the final second issue. But seven. And, um, it didn't seem long enough on that.
Um, could, but anyone make a motion or I can't.
Do you think that's solution?
Uh, you know, any thoughts, anything important? Uh, there's a draft within here, but I think the number at the top was blank.
I think the number is particularly assigned after it's, um, acted upon.
There is, there is, there is, uh, a recommended action, while staff recommends adoption revision. And bringing review of fiscal year twenty twenty five, six, capital improvement for budget and performance with the standard federal plan pursuant to section six five. And if anyone has any objection, we can do that on the resolution.
It will be all seven.
Right, thank you. Um.
Your vocal?
Are you got it or vocal?
Welcome.
This is. Chair Harden.
Aye.
Vice Chair Kuhn.
Aye.
Commissioner Beasoder.
Aye.
Commissioner DeRazo.
Aye.
Commissioner Johnson.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen.
Oh, sorry.
Let me.
Hi.
All right, the motion passes, seven, uh, six, zero, zero, zero.
All right. Uh, and that lead study session concerned land use map amendments, which are on plan, then to the map. There is no actual list of justice annual amendment, I mean, uh, can we stop representation?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Uh, this is a study session item to discuss potential land use map amendments. And this is one step in a. Multi-pronged process that, uh, the commission has been briefed on a couple of times. Uh, if you remember this slide from, I think, no. I lost track. From the last time we had a joint session.
Okay.
Um. We have the Tampa Project still going for the economic. Economic development and land use initiative, which this item is a part of. Uh, that started with a. Council approval of funding to do, uh, the assessment of the transit corridor plan to see if from a. Financial perspective, uh, it will pencil to develop what, what the city hopes to see on, on those lands. Based on what the city's regulations are. Uh. This, uh, item tonight is a discussion of the PC land use map. And this came about, uh, because the planning commissioner raised the point of. Let's not wait until the fiscal assessment is done. Let's have a conversation about are there places in the city where, uh, where the discussion of. Are the rules the way they are now? What, uh, what the, what, what the city thinks they should be? Uh, that's the purpose of this item. The results of this discussion, as well as the TCP assessment, will go to council later in the summer, uh, likely at the end of July. Uh, council will either take no action, uh, they'll call for minor amendments to our plans. Or for a larger scope amendment, uh, to a broader range of our plans that will probably result in increased heights. Uh, that would need a ballot measure. And if that did occur, we're anticipating that would be twenty twenty eight. Uh, so if that is greenlit in the summer, then the work on that will, will, will carry through. That also mirrors other work that is, uh, on our plate for the housing element implementation that itself is going to need a ballot measure in twenty twenty eight. Uh, uh, so the idea would be, we could be. Taking the land use ideas about economic development as well as housing opportunities and putting that, that together into a single package. Then there's the other tasks which are just a reminder of the, uh, M T C transit oriented, oriented communities, uh. Policy compliance, of which we do have some more information. Uh, originally it was thought that we would have to, we as a city would have to adopt. A number of things by January, uh, in order to qualify for, uh, O B A G funding. Uh, M T C came back with, uh. Some tiers of compliance and a point system, which, uh, is. Going to make it much easier to, uh, be able to be eligible for the first round of, uh, of the funding. Uh, they also came out with grants, uh, which, which the city has, uh, will receive some of, uh. Uh, those grants won't be issued until after June. And realistically. It's not possible to, uh, use the grand money to amend any rules to get in place in January. So that, that corresponds with the M T C view that. January, we have to get to a certain level, which is a relatively low level, uh. Uh, the equivalent of forty out of one hundred possible points. Uh, the grant money can be used to get even, uh, do, do some of the changes that will get us even more points. So in the next round later, uh. We will have a, a. Better chance of qualifying because they do plan to move the range. But that's already too much detail on, on, on that topic. Then we also have a climate action plan that is, is moving forward. Uh, it's underway. We have the community-based transportation plan. This is the. Plan by C C A G that is not run by the city, uh, for which. Our involvement is not that significant, but, uh, there will be a planning commission, uh. Carrying in Q one and, and for Q two of next fiscal year and, and the safety of an update as well. So this is a quick update of all the long-range initiatives with the key point being, we're here to talk about, uh, row two. So as part of that. There are two, there are three attachments, uh, two maps and a table. Uh, if you don't have a paper map and would like one, we have some extras. Uh, the idea that we're, we're, we're looking for is for. Planning commissioners to jot down notes of areas, uh, have a discussion about it. We have the land uses of the whole city, uh, along with a, a legend that has the heights allowed in, in, in each of those areas. But then we have an inset map that looks at, uh. In some ways, the transit corridor plan, but also basically the lands along El Camino that, uh, are currently zoned for more than, more than single-family homes. Uh, the slide on the screen is the same map, but it is, uh, it's cut into it. Whereas on, on, on the sheet, it, it all, all, all fits on one page. So again, if you need extra sheets, we, we have some. Uh, the expectation is. Uh, we would spend most of our time probably on this map, but if there are potential changes that are. That, that the commission is interested in exploring for the lands outside of the inset, uh, we're able to hop back on, onto this map for it. And then lastly, uh, there was a table provided. All that information is the exact same as what is on the table, uh, so there's nothing new there. These are just. Ideas. Uh, in the last column, there are, uh, lists of questions that, uh, one might do in each of those areas. Uh, there's not necessarily a recommendation that we do any of them. Uh, this, the purpose of this conversation is to hear from. From the planning commission, uh, which things should be looked at. Uh. Now, as we go into the conversation, uh, what I'd like to do is try to have as much clarity as to, uh, as, as, as to the purpose of this conversation. Uh, this would be the first of many meetings talking about this topic. Uh, so the idea, uh. For this is, uh, the, you know, what are we doing and why are we doing it? The what is we are, are considering updates to the land use policy, starting with the land use map. Uh, we're not. Uh, approving any, uh, we're not, uh. We're not, we're, we should try e- either to, to, to not pursue interesting items. It's just what, what items should be looked at? And the why, from the staff perspective, the why this is being brought up is to give us the best chance of a. Of, of a sustainable future, whether it's through the lens of, uh. Of the tax base and, and, and the budget and being able to fund the things that, that, uh, need to be provided in. Services, whether it's housing opportunities, so households are able to manage. Living in, in, in San Bruno, uh, with, with less impact on their, their incomes, whether it's. Environmental, whether it's quality life, or anything else you would want to have the list. It's, it's, the purpose of why we're here is, are there. Adjustments to be made to our land use policies that can make San Bruno, uh, a better place in the future. That's a very open-ended, uh, open-ended topic. Um, this concept here for the process is. It's also meant to try to shape what we talk about at this meeting. Uh, this is the ideation phase. Uh, personally, I think I live in the activation phase. I like to talk about the merits of something. Is that a good idea? Uh, or could that work? That's not the purpose of this conversation. This conversation is to get ideas. Of what might be opportunities, what might be solutions from everybody. Get it all down on a list. And then if council does initiate a land use amendment, then in future meetings, we would talk about, okay. And then if council does initiate a land use amendment, then in future meetings, we would talk about, okay. Is this idea a good one? Is this idea a good one? Uh. Or how can one possibly be, be changed or such? Uh, and then once that is worked out, which will be in. Twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven, then we enter, uh, for lack of better terms, the P. Having to do the paperwork, having to do the E I R, having to do the general plan amendment to the text, to the map, to specific plans and such. But I think the, the starting point, we'd like to say at the thirty thousand foot level as much as we can at, at this meeting. Uh, and, and, and again, we'll, we'll go into evaluating, uh, which ideas are the best to move, move forward with at, at a future date. So with that, there's no. Formal action here, uh, we're here to talk about potential changes. And this is also, want to be clear, this is not something that has to end at this meeting. Uh, if there's interest in have a, in, uh. In continuing this conversation to June seventeenth, our next meeting, uh, that's, it's perfectly fine. That's. That is sort of why we're targeting going to council in, in, in late July is to allow more time if the commission wants, wants to talk about this further. So with that, uh, staffs available to answer any questions. Uh, we can leave this on the screen. I under, hopefully we have the papers as well. And, uh, happy to answer any questions or we can just move into the conversation.
I'll just observe that we probably shouldn't set the height and set the thirty thousand foot up on the S A I and plant that.
That is fair.
Questions? Question? Or?
I'm, I'm excited. Yeah, you have paper math and a, and a relationship right ideas as much, but. Um. I was. I'm simply not. Sorry, Michael, this is quite, uh, like, really, generally, we're all sort of. Uh, but. Um.
I think it's mine. Sorry, guys. It's me, it's me. I'm trying to turn it off. It's okay. You're okay.
So what I think is that. It's similar match to what that report, talking about similar ideas. And that they've exchanged between then and now is that, and, and I don't pray there are a couple really hollow ones that weren't there before. Uh, there's the, well, actually, the point is that there. Very, very, to, um, all four of them. Thanks. And so it kind of changes my, my landscape of what we're looking at a little bit. Um, I know that when we were coming up with the, uh, the banking specific plan, um, we were really limited in heights. There's been some discussion about whether we want to release them, whether we wanted to add. Another number of discussion about overviews with, with adding housing in. And the time is asked, and then now it actually sounds more and more practical to start thinking about that. Um, so. I, I heard like me too, tossing around the, uh, possibility of, of adding paint. In those areas, um. And then. One of the other things this, this change is that we have the temper and redevelopment thing as well. And. It's right next door to this crazy little area that always nagged me, and it seems they're so closely connected spatially. Um, that they could be closely connected. People who've been and worked there. So I, I don't really kind of generalize the, kind of the business plan that's adjacent to the center. Does that happen? That for that one? Yeah. So, um. It just seems to me that this whole area. Um, it's kind of right for. Changing for. And reconsidering its use. Based on its. Accent to give it. And then outside that, kind of the. The other map. Outside, you know, the zoomed in map, kind of zoom out, we go, actually, there are a lot of school sites and I don't know. That would be, I don't have people go to a settlement that. And then follow it. But it just, it, they just sound sort of a school size. And then we can read them with them.
Right, that's like that, that's what I've run with, like, that's the highest school board, the council, the, uh.
And.
Yeah, most of the school sites are, uh, have the land designation of low density residential, so they can, those can be sold. Like at the Crestwood site and, uh, single-family homes to be built there, but if those are interested in doing. Higher density like, uh, at the town home. Level up to apartment level, then that would need, uh, a general plan amendment that would need a vote of people as well.
Okay, well, we'll just throw that into the idea stream, because I think that might be, I would be entertaining that.
All right, just to clarify. The, the thing that requires a vote of public is the height limit, because the ordinance, whatever that number was.
So.
So just pre-zoning it for denser without changing the height limit, can that be done on a council floor without a vote?
So the, uh, ordinance twelve eighty four, uh, the, the part we. We see the most is, is if you go over three stories for fifty feet, you need a vote of the people. Anywhere that's already over fifty feet, got that.
Right.
Uh. Then there's also, uh, any increase in, uh, the number of allowed units or the density of residentially zoned land. Now, when it was commercial land that was changed to mixed use. That's not changing residentially zoned land, but if it's a, a school property that allows. Uh. Low density. Going up to medium or high would, would, would need to have a vote. But a, as noted. There. We've already committed to do some amount of. Finding opportunity sites in, in the neighborhoods that is going to trigger a vote and. E- even adding an A D U per, uh, extra A D U. Beyond what the state allows, that would need a vote of the people. This, the state requiring it does not. Us allowing more. Uh, is gonna, is gonna require a vote.
Typically, it's A D U and F A D U.
Yeah.
Yeah. They're, they're really, they're pretty bad, uh, we're kind of about that, that category, really. So honestly, one of the things that surprised me of this is what a patchwork that is. Which doesn't seem. I don't know what to do. That is why there's so like. Little bits and pieces that did seem like an awful, like a super obvious thing if you adjust. I mean, that, that neighborhood is not here where anybody lives, right? It's like, it's completely surrounded by non-residential house size and. Just jacking that whatever the F A A limit was for the whole thing. Seems like a, a really easy winner.
And a couple of questions, kind of tossing. We've got to see where we go. Um. I wonder, uh, I know that the, the noise is a big concern about development. Um, in the F A A zone, the noise zone, but I'm curious, like. Two hundred cities. Those housing, even though it's not amended, the zone isn't the noise, uh, how do you mitigate the noise? Like. Certainly you're not the first people wondering about that. I'm just curious. Um, maybe.
Yes, and so, uh, on, on the. Inset map, we do have the semi, semi-vessible lines and, uh, for the city to. Allow housing, new housing in those areas, we need, uh, we won't be in compliance with the. Airport land use plan and that needs override. And the council is able to do that, and they did that for the housing element to allow, uh, housing at the ten grand site. Uh, so in theory, that could happen, uh. For any of the, any of the other lands in, in that area, and there are other cities who have approved. Uh, overrides to allow housing in, in the noise areas. And, uh, with. Modern prac. Modern practices, you can still get the interior noise level you need, uh. Uh, it's just your outdoor noise level will be high, uh, uh. But, but the indoor, uh, noise quality is, it can't, it can't be mitigated. The airport land use plan is. I believe over ten years old now, and I know on the last vote they had. Uh. For one of, of, of San Bruno's projects, some of the A O U C members. Actually voted that if the housing was not inconsistent. Uh, because they, they thought it was right, even though the plan technically says it's, it, it's just. It is, it is inconsistent. So the tide may be turning, uh, at, at the airport level. Uh, but locally, the council can approve allowing housing in this area. They just have to take a special vote.
So then we can put that in our pockets and talk about maybe these same ideas that would be, that would come to be the thing that's just. Preparing the vote. And then having their knocks in the front, all, don't, we don't miss anything for this potential vote.
Agreed, agreed. I, the, the, the thought being if we're going to have to do one. Uh, let's think of everything that. Uh, that, as, as commission, as a council, and for whatever public input we get between now and then. Is the path we're taking. The best package. It might not have everything in it, but it's, it's, given the. Sensitivity that this might have to the voters, uh. We want to ask for just right. Uh. If we leave a lot on the table, then we'll, we'll be like, oh, shoot, we could have gotten that. If we go too far. Then it might not pass, so. But as we go forward, uh, and you go, if, if council operates this, I do anticipate we're gonna, uh. We're gonna do polling and surveys to get a feel of, of, of where the, where the community is, and if, if some of the polling comes back. That certain things are just a, uh.
No, sir.
Non-starter, then, uh, we will probably strategically talk about not doing that.
So. I mean, thank you.
I just really, it's been the airport menu venue, I remember, it's kind of a hobby work for me. This is, that, uh, I really just would encourage staff to talk with, out of San Francisco and whatever other cities are affected, other, uh. Whatever is made in, I'm fairly sure, corner of the grid, and just like. All of the cities presenting united front to say. Let's just get rid of this accession process, you know, like, simply, we're not on every project having to write up paperwork for. Like I know in San Francisco, they took a newer project, we're doing it for the end brand, just like. Everyone agreed with the A O U C, we are, we are, the airport is there, we're not going to sue you over the noise, like, we're going to build, we'll have. Appropriate building standards in the, in the desk noise contours, uh, and just like. Once and for all, get rid of this problem. Um. And I, I just really think we should, we should get that done, um, and then we go have to discuss it, like, if you, if you all, um. You know, and for re-zoning one. Yeah, block or whatever. Um. Or any other comments, other issues? Uh, uh, which you're, you're all about.
Um.
Um, I decided a question, and it's, it's a bit non-technical, but commissioners comment, maybe think about it. Um, I don't know how, you know, if they have small kids, we go to this and that frequently. And I know you fly out of John Wayne. And first thing the pilot tells you, and it's on Southwest. Is that the thing's going to take a particular route, and it's, you know, not to be panic. But it's going to go like a roller coaster at first because of the local noise ordinance.
Hmm.
And it's good warning because it really does, you know, instead of a gradual. Inclined, it literally feels like it goes like this, and then it levels out, and then it runs forward. I guess what, what are the, if we don't begin to the V cells, we're staying thirty thousand feet, you all like that analogy. I'm just wondering, like, what, how does that work? And I'm always wondering how living in the avenue or right under the flight path. How other cities or towns have, well, those, those, uh, noise ordinances? And I wonder if we've engaged the thought about that as we kind of been considering to explore different development, different building in the city. It's just a fact with me that we don't have something like that, because it's just. It wasn't really that outdoor noise that you refer to so much. Uh, because you go, for, you're right, like, the people so high. Uh, so I don't know, there's any thoughts, but we can, we can be general.
Yeah, I think both, uh, both ideas about talking to, well. Teaming up and talking to the air, uh, the airport about amending their plans and, 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 and such is. We have, yeah, yeah.
Sure. Uh. Yeah, so, but first on the. Am I? Actually, Matt.
He's like, what? Also broke.
No.
Okay. No, so you said, when you mentioned like, on the dollar, like, being careful about which, but then, but then. Why can't you have that? That.
Yeah, in, in, in theory, we could, uh, and, 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 and that could be an interesting question to ask of the, of the polling experts of. Of. Of doing just that, yes.
I have a hundred things to pull up. Oh. I mean, is, what happens if you just repeal? The. The original ordinance? It doesn't just. Let you build as high as you want?
Uh, if ordinance twelve eighty four was repealed, then, uh, whatever, then the, the council actions would. Would. Would rule, and, and, and there wouldn't be the need for vote, so that. That's an interesting. A- approach, I mean. Maybe a, a, along the lines of, 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 of what you first said about had multiple things on there, maybe one of them is.
That's return zoning control.
Yeah, yeah. Because. If we outlined. Back in nineteen seventy seven, the cost of a ballot measure probably cost a little less. Uh, relatively speaking, uh, and. Maybe that might have some interest, but then at the same time, in case that doesn't poll or that doesn't work, still have this other thing that, in the event that. Uh, people don't overturn twelve eighty four, at least do this, so. Yes, that. That's something worth looking at.
Could that be done sooner? Is the next ballot in twenty twenty eight?
Uh. Twenty twenty is just the next presidential, uh, there, there, there will be ballots in twenty six.
Yeah.
Uh.
And repealing feels very uncomplicated, right? You say, hey, look, this isn't working out for us. Uh, if you just throw, I don't know. I don't know, most of the bottom, throw it on there, just see how it goes.
Yeah, that, that, that's an interesting idea, thanks.
Uh, you know, part of it on my mind is a, a single ban, you know. If we're limited now, you can't have a three-story, you're beginning to. I, I think, right, a whole works in the proximity. And, and that's one way to get. No. More density, you know, I know it's still single-family, but you get more density. Um, without really the, the impact. That to the community, like, without. Additional car issues or. You know, without such a degree in that, and it also will be able to connect. And so just, just being able to go three-story here. Maybe, I don't know, four-story. Yes. Um, the, uh. With certain key parts, with Florida ones, like the army president. I think there should be some kind of agreement prior to going down this route, spending our city resources. Getting them to pay for part of it, because what we'll end up doing is creating enormous. Bound, like, for, for their properties. And the army is huge, right? And we're talking, probably tens of millions of dollars probably in, in transaction value. Uh, so it's, if we can do something, or we're even force it on them to be a, like, a. Like, like bond around a certain. Person, but, um, a way so that we can just. Hit the compensate, sorry, not, not a part of the city. When I like to convey, not that, what? Yeah. You know, this, uh, we need to establish clients by common. So to ask them, oh, for, they, for, unfortunately, somehow, it could be future. Um. One, one thing that's crazy is like, this all zoning type, so. So instead of a, like, standard that we have, sort of a hydrant. I'd like to kind of know why or not it's just a format. So, or.
Yeah, I mean, in some ways. In some ways, you could argue the T C P. Tried to do that, uh, like, in, in, in the, in the T C P areas, the T O D zones allow. Wide ranges of, 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 of mixed abuses, and it's really more based on, uh, of. On, on the form of building you want to do, and. You could put office on that upper floor. It may not be the market now, but who knows? Or we put housing on the upper floor or something, so, uh, that is, that is. Simplifying that aspect is, uh. Is workable. I found that there's cer, there, there does always seem to be certain types of uses that. Community might want to make harder to do. Uh, but I think we could still do that with. More of a form-based code.
Um, what, what did the university have? Yeah, like, uh. Like a quota, I don't know what they called it. It was kind of like a quota code. Do you know about this?
No.
This is something that is, I'm looking up, but, um. Uh, back when they did their downtown, I think they, the way they did it, they did, they sold out a certain amount of strip fee and where we, uh, first. Was it, so, something kind of scattered. Um, and you know that. It hurt, you know, but, um. You know, the, the other thing is about having. You know, the other thing is about having like sort of. So so. You know, different property types tend to get built in like bats. We were going through the life science that, right, now, or we're at the end of it. And you'll find it wasn't really gonna be oversupplied with that, and then what do you do? Um I think if certain things, we might go to like a hotel at that, you know, I'm concerned about these these changes and how it might overwhelm. Development and it just not really work out over time. I don't know what balances though, like. How do you incentivize that over incentivizing? Performance standards, you know, we're missing like F A R, our performance standards. Um I don't think that we have high ones, but we don't have F A R, maintenance access. That's true.
We have some in in some of the areas we do, in in some of the T O Ds for non-resident, actually for residential, I believe.
We have a single family, but not in the TCP.
In 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 the TCP there, it it's.
For certain lawn sizes.
Yeah. Sort of it looks like it's for the smaller projects. We don't have. Minimize access to larger projects, so I think it's bad, especially um. If we're trying to promote development, we will have them in F A R. I I think that's something that we've got to do. Going into the neighborhoods, allowing different news types. I wonder how this would impact the vision, the tender, so for that all along, generally the crystal rings. Allowing retail along all over the streets. Good at growing developing. If you are trying to make more density, it's probably good. Certain parts in the single valley are very different uh feel that are so long London. Um it. There's a lot of people already uh in that area, right? So it's it's different than a couple of years ago that have. Um what was to be saying? So I I think breaking that up, looking at that as a different part of the company. Kind of. Tell us, there's a solid. I'm down. If you want to really get into the changes in the neighborhood, there's there's, I think. We're sort of there, we are with the concept of accessory burning units, where accessory burning units were twenty years ago. Um there's some some cities now are experiencing with urbanization, strong towns, it's very big on them. Um. But. You know, something where it's like you can do like a corner, a corner store, and you could.
A little better, Scott.
Um, which I I think it really there, having having uh. They have a lot of small urban or schoolers, we feel like you realize you don't have to know how to pack anymore, if you want to bring a pancake, you just walk across. It's pretty great, so. Uh, no, it's just change the internet, help help. But yeah, but yeah, yes, but conceptual. Um, so yeah, I I definitely, I don't know it exactly, and then that and that kind of rezoning is already within capacity. Because it doesn't change density or anything. I think that would be within the capacity of the council without uh uh going public.
Yes, uh cha-changing. Making the zoning so that uh some of the properties could be non-residential would not trigger anything until eighty-four.
Okay, um. Yeah, I mean, I I think in terms of um. You know, the idea of a ballot measure, and I definitely like the the conversation around like, should this all be um one big beautiful ballot measure? Uh versus four or five things um that give people a little bit of a menu. Uh I think if you try to pack everything in the one, there's sort of death a thousand cuts issue, um where it's like a bit. Um. But I mean, I think we should at least consider. Uh having kind of a T O D element, but when we say everything, it's in those half-mile circles, we're raising it up to. I don't know, sixty or, I mean, is that the the warehouse in sixty-five, and that's like directly the the light path, and so like, I think. We probably do sixty-five through most of. Um the forest, lane park, neighborhood, through downtown, in the middle of the T O D, through Valner. And without hitting the FAA limit. Um and then obviously, you know, force anyone to build anything, but if we also adopt like a single stair reform, then you can start doing, you know. Four, five-story, single-stair. Multiplexes, you know, small flex. Um, single stair has been highly successful in other cities. It's, yeah, I mean, it's quite dominant to drive down for for small apartments, and there's no. No evidence that's fire, sorry, it's it's basically fine, it's a fire building. Uh. Oh, uh generally multi-county housing, if you're doing like, if you want to do like a four-story building. Um you have to do like a stair each end, they're like all four layers. Um. Europe, starting, I don't know, uh you're gonna be there, second thing. Basically, they don't buy it. But like the European market has the quality of wireless building materials in through, they adopt reforms that you can do essentially like. You have a single entryway and a stairwell and like each floor is a unit, and so you get larger unit from all that building with more lights. In those, for the, you know, sides, um and that's a very popular. Form, a lot of um experience that. I mean, and what would you kind of relax and sand like those? Yeah, I believe we, I mean, like, we have that whole, we had the dual stair issue with that. Um commercial building a year or so ago.
Yeah, we we can certainly look into that. I'm gonna try not to go into activation mode where we talk.
Oh, fair enough.
Ideation, ideation.
In terms of like, I just, I think if you wanted to relax the heights through that, the circle around Caltrain, the circle around Bard. So you have now the opportunity to do like a fifty, sixty-foot across the street from Bard, um. Also, doing single stair reform significantly improves what you can get on small lots. Um because if you have to do dual stair, you need a large footprint, otherwise the stairwell cells are going to be up to too large a percentage of the footprint. Uh. So, uh, uh, um. Yeah, I think it should have been already brought up, it's like that he's having an option, like that's just. Get ready to go, we want to return zoning control council, um. I think that covered um my notes on this. I definitely, like, I think simplification, like making all that patchwork, doing it all on one level. That is the quality role, I believe that's would be good, that's a kind of a way. It's both a way to present it to the public, people like to simplify, cutting it, make it easier. Um and I think like it's also like, it's not sensitive, like it's it's good for the health, we gotta look at it and have a consistent thing through the whole area. Uh huh, so, yeah. So, uh we're not permitted to build above grade parking. Above, above grade parking. Or depends on that.
Yeah, twelve eighty-four also has a yeah a freestanding parking structures aren't allowed.
Uh, yeah.
With with and it, which is why like the movie theater, they put a movie theater on top of it, so it could go. A a about great parking, but had had a building on top of it, so.
Yeah, above grade is largely not a freestanding structure.
Yes.
Right, which we had when we talked about doing a freestanding structure in downtown, so if you wanted to repeal that, you could say like, you know, this. In order to facilitate this, we'd like to repeal this out of the. Yeah, I I think that's, we can't do like a wrap on what we call. Like it's a it's a parking style, we have the units around the parking structure, that's one of the ways.
You are able to do that. It's just a freestanding structure you can't have, so.
Oh.
A a a wrap would be perfectly fine, uh uh. But but still, ha-having the. Having to, not having the option of of a freestanding structure is. Makes a charge, particularly in the daydream. Uh the story that. I mean, we were. Uh lucky, maybe that's uh. Uh YouTube had a lot, had very. Deep uh. Deep pockets to. Dig that huge hole in the ground to put all that parking down there and then just two, three stories above it. Uh they've been very clear to us, uh they don't see another building being built by them, uh. Un-under the way the rules are and such, so it's. That goes back to the, if one of the options is to repeal altogether. There's things about housing options, there's things about economic development, there's there's. Lots of things to maybe make the appeal of.
Yeah, that that alone, I'm just a lot of. I think that, do we have a theater car? Did you hear the comment then? If not, it's totally fine, but I suppose at some point they'll come and have anything to say. That's fine, that's fine, it's good. Oh, sorry, that's your dog.
Well, I certainly support creativity thinking. I love being outside the box. I think good for my city, I've lived here for forty-eight years and uh. And even though there's been a lot of change, there has been a lot of change. And we seem to fit things in versus being things outside and a little picture. And let's opportunity. Uh the question that continues to come up in conversation and I'm thinking is, excuse me, is um. We still have internal issue that sometimes we, what we have been looking about. And then, that was mad, and it's a good one, particularly for the non-communist airport, and just. You know, I remember. Fifty years ago, driving Sacramento, me, my gosh, this is really a test, that would just be, I'm sure really feeling like it. And I feel we're in one of those kind of mind situations. And so. I can never just keep thinking about the little picture without at least. Um putting on the table. It isn't maybe I can talk about it, it's not general, I know those things, but not to lose sight of that. I would say that some are on the line. You're trying to nudge that piece, it's a dunk, that can face me with anyone. So, uh I love this opportunity to think outside the box and um and thought. Reading ways, I mean, we have a really interesting um. Uh line, I mean, along the property. Right of borderline, Milbrae comes first, and then my property is on Bruna, but it's still further south. I am right on Saturday, and it's that one, those um four lots there, and and it just uh. The border lines are just very confusing, right, so. You know, we'll think of one that goes that strip mall at San Bruno, which is uh looks like Milbrae, but it's really San Bruno. So, um, this is really useful, and thank you for having this opportunity to do so.
Yeah, I always said like. Our side limits, I don't really think I'll be side over attached, I mean, I think it's a good adjustment, say, whatever the FAA limit is, we're not gonna regulate other than that. Um because it's not like we can get anything like that, you know, I know people are upset now, and they love carp, and like a builder's for any project, it's like, I forgot, like, seven. Or something, something outlandish for the the environment it's in, which has caused the assembly to be like, yeah, we should have been the one. Um. So, uh, yeah, we should, we should have a version of this and try to maximize, um in in some ways also like. If you do a very maximal version, it helps create the sense that what you actually want to pass is a little more moderate. Uh but you know, you may or may not, maybe people will give you the whole thing. Um, yeah, that's all I have, and uh. If you were done.
Interesting, that's a very good question. You mentioned the having um not gaining use, but. Be.
It's a commercial. Yeah, that would that would be outside the scope of this, it would make it like the capital actually, that's a deal already.
So that's something could be changed. Without any, like, for example, let's say, I guess. That was a great idea, that we had a little cafe in our neighborhood that also sold gallons of milk and butter and eggs. Um, that's something that you wouldn't need to change in voters, that's something that you could.
Yes, yes, uh that type of of change could happen, I. At the, my initial reaction is it would still need a general plan amendment, uh because we want, we, because this. Low-density residential, I'm sure just talks about. Residential, uh and so we we want to add some verbiage there, but but it would not have to go through uh through the voters.
They're department. That's why, right? That that would require an environment study, kind of a C vote, right?
Uh. Pretty much every general plan amendment uh needs a level of environmental study, uh. That one arguably, given, given the way CEQA has changed uh to be more. Vehicle miles traveled oriented than uh level of service oriented on 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 the traffic side of things. I'm not. It it might not be as. Major of an environmental study, if if it were just that change, uh. admittedly, I do think that would be the type of change that should have a lot of engagement, uh because it, my my. My read of how things have have gone in San Bruno is that. When the discussion's been about increasing heights along El Camino or at at Tan Fran or what what have you, uh. Along the transit quarters and stuff, and not changing anything really in the neighborhoods. Uh we don't get a lot of people at the meetings. I think if we had an item where we're talking about possibly allowing this in residential, residential neighborhoods. We would get a lot more input on, you know, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? And and we should think about all those things, so. But regardless, it's it's still a interesting idea and it can uh. It's definitely on the list, yeah.
Yeah, there are, and we're coming, um back to the agenda. Uh that was it for our kind of business, I have eight comments from staff.
Yes, we do have two updates for you all. Um we wanted to update you on the community workshop. That the city held on April twenty-four fourth, and that was for the climate action plan and the safety element update. Was held in this building um after work hours. Um and we had about twenty-five members of the community attend, um and people were able to interact with. A whole lot of boards, Spanish translation and interpretation was provided. Um and people gave input on kind of climate ad-adaptation policies and greenhouse gas reduction strategies that they thought would be a good idea. There'll be continuing outreach for both, um and there's also a virtual workshop for the safety element update um tomorrow, which we can send you all information about if you'd be interested in attending. Um and then second update um is that. On May twenty-seventh next week, actually, we come today, the city council will consider. Forming a complete streets committee, which would merge the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee and the. Traffic, safety and parking committee into one body. Um and the intent would be that that body would have more of a policy focus, um and certainly would have some opportunities to collaborate with the planning commission. On transportation-related scopes of specific plans and other transportation-related plans. Potentially some joint study sessions, so we'll certainly keep you all updated on the outcome of that hearing.
Do you have a list of those? They've mentioned, I'm trying to write the good one, and that's bike, is it bike and several others, but.
Um, the two committees? The two committees that would be merging, is that the question? Um it's the bicycle pedestrian advisory committee, which is one committee, and then, I know it's a lot of sorts. Yeah, and then the other one is the uh traffic, safety and parking.
Pick it up.
Done.
Um. All right, I I just remembered, I do want to comment on um. The uh twenty-one elements uh commissioner seminar that was a little less than a month ago. Uh there was some conversation around the. Uh dockless bike sharing program that Burlingame and Milbrae joined together into. And I wondered if we had talked about possibly joining with them, they're right down the road and expanding, but the footprint of an existing program would be a lot easier than spinning up a new program.
Christie's writing down, yep, we can follow up with them. Christie's writing down, yep, we can follow up with them, I've heard a presentation at a community dot org. And seminar for staff about that program as well.
Okay. Um, you know, in that case, uh, we are adjourned, our next regular meeting is scheduled for June seventeen, twenty twenty-five, seven P M, we break here. All right, thank you, Ron.